Good evening. Today is Thursday, March 14th at 6:30 PM. This is the Olentangie Local Schools Board of Education's a regular meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mr. Bart?
Here.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Here. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first acts items to approve the agenda as amended or amended.
So moved.
One second.
Any discussion on the agenda? Ms. Hatfield?
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Bart?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we have a presentation item, the Ultimate Golf Machine, Adam Schreiber from Berkshire Middle School.
Oh, I thought we were going to like have this big machine.
Excellent.
I have some videos for you guys.
Good.
Once again, my name is Adam Schreiber, I'm a seventh grade math teacher over at Berkshire Middle School. And my project is called the Ultimate Golf Ball Machine. So basically, I give students a golf ball, and they have to create a machine that by the end has a functional pulley, has to set off a chemical reaction.
Oh.
My accelerated students have to create a simple task. It's got to go through a tunnel, have an incline or decline. Also with that, they have to create a scale model on a piece of paper that they have to determine what the scale factor is going to be. And they have to stay within a budget. So, I actually give them $28.45 of pay money, and I actually created a store called Sentinel Super Saver. And their job is to figure out how they can rent my tools that I gave them to build this, along with, you know, wood glue, wood, duct tape, nails, and most important cylinders, like the PVC piping, to actually create this. Cardboard is negotiable, and we talk about different ways how they can negotiate with me. And if they go too high, I immediately say, yes, I will take that as the price. So, some of the tools we actually have, everything from a bandsaw to saws and hammers and PVC cutters. A lot of this is actually part of our school. Years ago, we had ModTech, and I kind of took all of that and said, hey, this is sitting in the back room, let's see if we can do something with this. And I provide some of my own tools as well. So why this project?
Let's see.
I think kids really benefit from working with tools. I think it goes a lot with our 21st century skills, being creative, learning as a team, and problem solving. But the big thing, guys, is that I really wanted something that my kids would remember.
Yeah.
So, kids that come back in high school and see me, the first thing that comes out of their mouth is like, hey, you did the golf ball machine project. And along with that, building, hammering, installing is super fun, and a ton of our kids have no idea about it, and they're super excited to do it. We actually, I take over the multipurpose room the last like three weeks at school, and this is what we did. The kids absolutely love it. I love it, even though it's super loud every single class period. And so, the best way to describe this is to kind of show you guys some presentations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
First one's called Thunderstruck, we'll see why in a second.
Okay, so this is our decline and our tunnel, and this is meant to like slow down the ball. This is our pulley, goes in the pulley, comes up, the Alka-Seltzer tab goes in the vinegar, hits this, the ball rolls in, and falls on the ball.
Yes.
Oh, wow! Woo! Let's go!
So, we're going to cut the string, which is going to drop the rock on the board, which is going to send the golf ball into this, and the golf ball is going to roll down the tube, which is the decline of the tube, and it hits the bent piece of chicken wire, which sends it over to the right, which hits the steel wool, dropping it onto the batter to make the fire, and then the ball drops into the cup.
All right.
We need to do this outside. Where are your scissors?
Oh, so close!
Can we do it again?
Okay, so, this is the golf string, goes down, down, slope, so it's going to make some vinegar.
They can sort of end the vinegar, okay.
Then it hits a buy-in, simple task, and that.
Okay, it's going to be great.
All right.
Wow, pause, you did a great job, I heard it! Oh, I heard it, yeah, I heard it, I heard it from the top.
The reason why they're going so crazy, they've been working for three weeks trying to build this thing, and they, some of those presentations, like the last one, they've been trying for four days straight to make this thing work.
Oh, my gosh.
And so, that's like a great reaction to see at the end, things starting to come together. So if you guys have any questions for me?
Yeah. Do they, oh, do they draw it out first, or how, how do they get started?
So, we started the first week, I showed them some, these are very similar, a Rube Goldberg machine.
Yeah, I'd say it's a Rube Goldberg machine.
And so, I showed them a couple of videos of that. I try to be very vague, I actually don't show them these videos, because if I do that, that kind of cycles the creative process.
Yeah.
And so, I spent the first week of them just thinking, like writing something with their partners, they actually draw a, like a rough draft of what they think they would make, and then they kind of go from there. So, I tried to get them doing it then the second week.
Wow.
Did they have to show their math when you figure out the expense, so their $27, whatever it was?
Yeah, so they have a packet that goes with it, and they have to actually record every single dog that comes in. And also with that, they have to create a scale model that is drawn to scale. So, I actually will measure their machine and see if it's actually drawn to scale correctly.
Wow.
How many, how many years have you been doing this?
This is like year six.
Wow.
So, have, have, so your kids, some of your oldest ones, you're in college, right? Or right at?
I was doing this at my previous school.
Okay.
And I grew up in Portland.
Oh.
So, before that, it was, I came here, my oldest student, I think, is not seniors, they're seniors.
Okay.
And one I saw was a junior, he kind of mentioned that to me.
Are, do any of the older ones, are they looking at engineering?
Good question. The one that I talked to recently, he doesn't really know what he wants to do yet, he's still in business.
That's all right.
How many kids are in your class that you do this with?
So, I do this with like 25 to like, you know, 28 students, who can go to like three to four.
Okay.
And then, we move into the multipurpose room, because there's just so much to kind of spits out that didn't actually work.
Now, are they allowed to bring in anything from home?
They are.
Like, okay.
And they can actually use that to barber and trade with other students.
Okay.
Which is also nice.
Yeah. I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I want to compliment you on your ingenuity in engaging the kids. And as a parent of a student with dyscalculia, he comes home every day and says, why do I have to know this? Why do I have to know this? And he, too, has a very creative math instructor, and they're doing a blueprint at school, and they have to purchase things and use the math, and it really helps kids understand the concept behind the math that they're learning, so I applaud you. That was, that was really neat to see. Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so next agenda item is the Board President's Report. Just three things I want to cover. First, State Board of Education passed new graduation requirements, I believe yesterday?
Yes.
That will be effective.
Well, yeah, they did, but...
Effective for the class of 2022. The most controversial item is the, what do you call it? Culminating Student Experience, which is loosely defined, and my expectation, it'll be varied from district to district, as well as building to building. So, I guess what I would ask Mr. Rafe and the team to come back with is, how are we going to deal with these new requirements, now we're going to work into our curriculum? So, that's an agenda item for a future board meeting.
Thank you, yes.
As it gets closer.
Mrs. McMurray and Mr. Fettie are shaking their heads, yes.
Second item is the, as I understand, the education budget will be made available tomorrow.
Supposed to at 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM?
Supposed to.
So, we'll be waiting, I'm sure, on pins and needles, to see what that does for us. And I'm sure we'll be back with some more on that at a future board meeting. And finally, I've asked Dave and Mindy to provide an update on OEF. Dave, I know you went to the strategic planning session, so if you want to share with us how that went?
Sure. Well, we're all aware, of course, the significant contribution that the Olentangie Education Foundation has made to Olentangie's school mission, very successful effort over many years. As of last year, the OEF has reached a financial position through its fundraising over a variety of avenues to bring on a part-time development director, and over time, that will even be more enhanced. So, they've really reached a significant level of moving forward, enhancing the effort. Last Tuesday evening, speaking to that whole advancement, was their second, which will be an annual strategic planning session, and it was, as Krista attended and Jack was there, was as liaison members from the school administration, was really a significant effort that evening. Just a whole variety of different strategic planning prioritizing issues, like bringing in money, and then how that money is allocated. And just, just really pleased to be a part of that discussion. And while we have everybody's attention, put on your calendars, for those who may not be aware, we were changing, the OEF Board is changing the typical, over several years, March community event to Zooland Tangi. And it's called Zooland Tangi because it will be at that new Africa Center location, so therefore, Zooland Tangi, and that is August 9th, which is a Friday evening, and it'll be 6 to 10. There'll be entertainment and food, et cetera, raffles, et cetera, so much like before, but I think the venue will be really cool. And it does give you access to the zoo as well, and that location is on what they call their savanna, so even at the event with the outdoor patio, you can see some of the animals moving about like giraffes. So, that'll be a great event, so.
Okay. Any of those you want to cover?
Yeah, so a few months back, we had talked about, after the announcement or restructuring of OEF's mission, and doing, focusing their work on students within the district as opposed to students leaving the district, we had talked about setting up a fund from the Board of Education where we, as board members, contribute annually. We can reach out to prior board members and set this fund up. So, I thought we should have a discussion about it, because it's not my decision, it would be all of our decisions, and if we would like to move forward with that, we have a couple of parameters to set. So, the first would be, you know, A, do we want to establish one, B, would it be endowed and, or non-endowed? Are you familiar with what an endowed fund is as opposed to a non-endowed?
I am not, so you can...
So, if it's endowed, it means it can live on in perpetuity. So, you can't spend more than, usually it's like a 4%, and so, they've set the endowment at $10,000. And so, it earns interest on itself, so you don't have to, you can still contribute towards it, but it pays the grant each year on its own because it's invested. If it's non-endowed, you can, you can basically spend it all, but you have to replace it every year. So, that is the difference between endowed versus non-endowed. And we would have to choose a name, which I would probably suggest the Olentangie Local Schools Board of Education Fund, pretty simple. And its purpose. My recommendation would be for it to be unrestricted. That means that our administration can evaluate the grant requests and make recommendations rather than us having to be involved in that. And, and then we would have to establish an advisor. So, my recommendation would be the Board President or Vice President to make sure that if we're going to contribute each year, that that gets carried out. Comments, suggestions?
So, my, my reaction is I think it's a great idea to set up a fund, and then obviously it's up to each board member to the extent that they want to participate.
Yes.
But it's an option that's available to all of us, should we choose to participate. I would recommend it's the Vice President's role to be the advisor.
Oh, that's a good idea.
That's well played.
Well played.
Well played.
Well, I do work for a foundation myself, so I could handle that, but... Any other comments?
I would volunteer myself to contact some of the old, the former board members, to ask them to participate as well. Like, Ed Bischoff is on the Career Center School Board with me, and Terry Meider works at the Career Center, and Terry Morgan is at the Ohio School Boards Association, so I'm more than happy to reach out, you know, to some of those.
I still have Adam's number, if you want to...
Okay, we can talk to Adam White and Jennifer Smith, and see if they would participate.
And just to, you know, to be, for transparency reasons, we would contribute our own...
Our own money.
Money, yes.
It's not board money.
It's our own money, and reminder, we make $125 a meeting, so, you know, we were thinking maybe the, that the annual contribution be $250, which would be our salary for two meetings. I still think that that could be up to the individual board member. If a prior board member wanted to make a $100 contribution, I would gladly welcome it. But I just wanted to have an open conversation with all of you before moving forward.
That's a good idea.
I think it is a great idea. Okay.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. That's all I had. I'll turn it over to Mr. Rafe for the sub-teams report.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening. My buddy, Rupert Boycehouse.
Congratulations. All right, well, good evening, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. Actually, a pretty short report this meeting, so I'm going to start off with, again, our usual living our mission slides. We've had nine of our spellers from Olentangie have qualified for the Scripps College of Communication Spelling Bee. There's going to be 53 participants, and the winner of this next round will move on to be at the National Spelling Bee in, usually it's in DC, I think.
The one that's on ESPN?
It's on ESPN now.
Yeah.
I know, so, so let's hope those, one of those nine spellers advance. I actually had an opportunity to participate in the Juice Telethon. Mr. Nicola, English teacher at Orange High School, has done an outstanding job of growing the broadcast journalism program, and they, for the second year now in a row, have hosted a telethon as a fundraiser, and this, they sell advertising, they get donations, they get call-ins, and this year, they've raised over $10,000, and they use that money to help fund their program. So, I know Mr. O'Brien's well familiar with it, his daughter spent the entire day there.
I did a tour of the studio on Saturday before they started.
Yeah, it's...
The old studio, now.
Yeah.
I guess they vacated his room, and they started construction.
Yeah, we're going to...
The new studio.
It's just grown so much that we have to give them more space, and the space they're in is not agreeable to the Orange Fire Marshall, so that's kind of why we had to move it, but they just do an outstanding job. And I, if you watch any of their sports telecasts, they're, they're just fantastic, and the program is growing at all of our schools, so I could see down the line, that'd be something, an enhancement we make in, in all of our schools. I want to take opportunity to highlight Peyton Parks, who's a fourth grade teacher. She's piloting an approach called Whole Brain Teaching, which maximizes student engagement. She did, on our PD Day, she did, or last, I'm sorry, in November, she taught the teaching method to the entire staff at Tyler Run, and we're going to get some press on this because I think the Story Channel, they did some social media on it, and Channel 4 and 10 both picked it up. You see their hands moving on the puppet strings? So, so that's great positive publicity for us. So, there we have, celebrating our Board of Education. We had, Dave and Julie were honored last night. Mr. O'Brien was unfortunately unable to attend, but Dave and Kevin were both recognized for their decade now of service. Time flies when you're having fun, I'm sure you're thinking right now. And Julie was recognized with an OSBA Award of Achievement for her, for the time she dedicates outside of her board activities, so. And then finally, Karen Sedoti is there, she was recognized, the Olentangie Academy was recognized for being Central Region Outstanding Program, so congratulations to all of you, and thank you for that service. 10 years is a long time, it's a lot of...
See, I still think I'm only like nine years and two months.
Well, those two months in their eyes count as a year, so...
I think you're good.
They do, they qualify me as a...
And remember, in Olentangie, they're all dog years.
Yeah.
So, it's really 63 years of board service, so. And then finally, our next round of important dates, we get a little bit of a break here. Third quarter is finishing up this week. We do not have students in session on Friday, it's a contractual teacher workday, we have one more week of school, and then spring break, which is always welcome, and then our next board meeting, so.
I hear the next board meeting's going to be a great one. Why? Oh!
Yes.
We just talked about that.
I have, I have a question for our How University Scripps College graduate. Did you have to do a spelling bee to get your commencement exercise?
Unfortunately, I did not. I don't know if I would have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rafe. Next agenda item is Treasurer's Report, Ms. Hatfield?
Absolutely. So, we just have a couple of items on the agenda for approval, appropriations, donations, and minutes. I would like to read the donations to recognize those at this time. We have several 3D printers that were donated totaling $150,000 from Mike Albright at IPSG International Products. So, those were distributed to Olentangie High School, Olentangie STEM, and Olentangie Orange High School. And this individual has donated printers in the past, and those have been distributed to the other high schools as well. So, we thank him for that donation. We also have a little over $3,700 in a donation from the Olentangie Liberty Athletic Boosters for an assistant softball coach at Liberty High School. And we have a little over $1,800 for a half-boys volleyball assistant coach at Orange High School, and $1,200 for a third of a boys' assistant lacrosse coach at Orange as well from the Orange Athletic Boosters. So, we're always very grateful for the individuals in our community and our support groups that donate, not only dollars, but also in-kind donations as well as their time and efforts. In terms of the Treasurer's Office, we are currently working through the budget cycle. We have collected the budgets from our departments and from our school buildings, so we're working on compiling those and getting that information to our Finance and Audit Committee, as well as our District Leadership Team, and going through those numbers so that we can roll them up into the May forecast update. Unfortunately, with the state funding and the timing of the state funding, while we will keep a very close eye on it, it will not, we won't have all the information approved by the governor to put it in the May five-year forecast update, but we can certainly provide updates as they come along and continue to have those conversations. And then those final numbers would be addressed in the October update unless there's a significant change. We could probably do one midsummer if we chose to. So, we'll keep working on that and keep moving forward with our Finance and Audit Committee to get the forecast update and continue forward with our projections. Are there any questions that you have for us?
No, I think, I think that's a prudent approach to the May forecast, let's just go with what we know, and then as, as the budget evolves, as it always does, we can always update midsummer if we need to. So, it's, this is the right approach.
You're welcome.
All right, next agenda item number nine, public participation, do we have any?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right, we've got our discussion item, so Mr. Sexton, please come up for the Technology Strategic Plan Update. And Jack Fettie as well.
Doctor.
Doctor Fettie.
Yes, please.
Please.
Then what did your daughter say?
I can't help anybody. It's not a real, I'm not a real doctor.
She's right.
All right, all right. So, thanks for allowing us to present. Rob and I are presenting a update on the strategic plan as it relates to technology. We presented about this time last year to you, and we want to show you what we've done and where we're headed. We have two goals that are top priority within the plan related to technology, and those are to manage our assets wisely and to implement a digital conversion. As far as that first goal, our first objective was to determine a desired state for where we want to be, and we did that, and we presented it to you last March, where what are all the elements of a fully functioning technology infrastructure? What do those look like? So, we had determined that, and then the next step is to produce a comprehensive five-year plan to get us to where we want to be. So, we're using a stoplight method of measuring our progress on these objectives, so we've completed that first objective, and we're in progress with the second one. As far as implementing a digital conversion, the things that we're working on are, first, to understand how we can use digital resources to differentiate instruction within grade levels, helping teachers utilize technology tools wisely. Also, that's from an academic side, from more of an operations side, we continue to digitize parent processes like forms and payments whenever possible to reduce the need for paper transactions. We're also working on incorporating some national technology standards into all of our K-12 curriculum blueprints, so that you don't just learn about how to use technology appropriately in a technology class. You're going to be having these standards, we're going to have them embedded in all of our courses. And then, we're in progress on each of those three objectives, and then the final one, we haven't started yet because we need to wrap up the first couple, but once we, once we have a solid foundation of using the tools, or we understand how we expect teachers to use the tools, we're going to develop a way to evaluate each building, so that each building can be supported in a differentiated manner to make sure that the teachers in a given building are using tools well to meet the needs of kids. Okay, so as far as our technology outlook, we have a, we have three components that we typically look at, network, infrastructure, and devices, or network software and devices, sorry. So, and, do I have anything else to say yet? I'm sorry.
No, no.
All right, he's doing good.
You're doing great.
All right. If you ask me what any of this means, I will look to Rob. But one of the main factors, one of the main things that we're moving towards is 5G. You've probably seen it actually a lot in the press, the whole wireless, or cellular infrastructure, I think, is moving towards 5G. That's where tech is headed, so we need to have our infrastructure ready for that when it's, you know, a necessity, so we're growing towards that. We've already started to experience some capacity challenges with our bandwidth this year. Rob monitors that regularly, and we have different, I call them pipes, going in different directions, and when one fills up with bandwidth, he'll switch buildings around to make sure that everyone can continue to maintain access, and that's working right now. But as access continues to increase and use continues to increase, we are always going to have to be looking at increasing our bandwidth. We've already begun a wide-area network redundancy project, and we're going to do a disaster recovery network next year, which is, is that the redundancy one?
Yeah, there's two, there's two pieces of that. There's a redundancy of the WAN, and then part of the whole disaster recovery is to have a secondary site that we could fail over to if something happened to Shanahan. That's what happened to Shanahan. All right. But that'll be, that'll be Orange High School.
So, we have, like, all of our phones are now internet-based, is that right? Are they not internet-based?
Yeah, they're, they're all IP-based. They don't need the internet to work, but that's the language they talk between each other.
So, more of the district is becoming dependent, obviously, like anywhere else, on the internet, so it's becoming more and more critical that it doesn't fail on us on a given day.
But I guess in terms of disaster recovery, you know, I see more companies moving away from a physical disaster recovery site and going more to the cloud?
Yeah.
I mean, would we be heading in that direction versus spending money on building redundant infrastructure in a physical location?
Correct, yeah. So, most of everything we need is already at Orange. With a few small tweaks, we can get it to where it can literally copy everything from Shanahan to Orange, with even a third being Liberty if we needed it. But what we'll do, too, part of that plan will be to offload a lot of the critical databases and information up to the cloud, assuming it meets all of our security specs, which so far, they have.
And then the last item within the network is a refresh of all of our network stuff. We did that two years ago now, one year ago?
Three.
Three years ago now? So, one of the things... So one of the things that we had realized then was that that had not been planned for. And as the, as the equipment got old, we weren't planning for it in the budget. So now we need to know when those cycles are coming so that we have fewer surprises for our friends in the treasurer's office. So again, using that stoplight method, right now, we would, and this is definitely non-technical, this is so I can understand it, but that, we would say we're green on access. Where if somebody needs to be on the internet or on a device right now, we're doing a good job of having that available. And our reliability and speed are at a yellow, it's working fine. But he is, Rob is having to make changes as, like I said, the bandwidth maxes out in one direction or another. So we're okay right now, but that's the areas we'll be working towards. The next kind of component is devices. We saw a spike in PTO-purchased Chromebooks up till about '16, '17. I think we're all aware of that. And as the Chromebook lifespan is about three to four years, so as all of those non-district purchase devices that were so generously donated to the district, as they fall off, if we're not replacing those devices, we're gonna see a decline in access. So Rob's trying to be as creative as possible with his adoption cycles of new devices. One thing he's recommended that makes a lot of sense is to transition to a leasing model rather than a purchasing model so that we have a consistent level of access and that we can budget more predictably. And then also, we're seeing, as it relates to devices, that demand just continues to increase. Teachers are becoming more proficient with ways to use devices to increase efficiency and effectiveness of instruction. Kids are using it more and more, so demand is certainly a factor. When we look at our two biggest kind of device components, we have 13,000 Chromebooks in the district for, you know, 22,000 students, and we have about 3,300 staff laptops, which are all already on a lease cycle.
Yeah, correct.
So, given that those, all of those devices have about a four-year lifespan, we're gonna start tracking them. We already have them on an inventory list, but again, for me, you know, this tells us that next year's budget is gonna have to address Chromebooks significantly in order to replace that PTO kind of gap that's gonna occur.
So maybe you have the 13,000 Chromebooks, how many are PTO-driven versus district-driven?
Oh, boy, how many would have been bought by PTO? I'm sure we can find that out, I don't know, do you have any idea?
Yeah.
Complacent.
No, I-
Like 40%, would you say, or?
Probably not that high, probably in the around the 30, 30 range, 2%.
And what do you want that distribution to be? In terms of the age curve, what do you want that to be?
I would imagine 33 across the board in terms of the ideal distribution.
That would be fantastic.
And I think that's what we're gonna try and work towards. Once we get on that leasing model, that's what'll happen, is when the lease is up, it gets returned, and you get a refresh so that you kind of stay on that pattern.
Just gotta get into the cycle.
And then the last component is software. You know, if you have children in the district who are logging into my OLSD, you'll see a lot of these icons and many more. Software is much more difficult to plan on a five-year model because it is evolving so quickly. A tool that was good last year might not be good this year. A tool that's great this year might not be good next year. Something better can come along. We utilize free resources whenever possible. When we look to adopt resources, we're always looking for an online or a digital component so that it's fully functional within any classroom, so that teachers have that flexibility and kids have the flexibility as well. Through our continuous improvement committee, which is a parent committee, we developed a privacy rubric to evaluate all of these resources, to make sure that we're not sharing too much student data. And actually, Rob and Peggy shared with me today that they had a call with a vendor that they, you know, as they said, it broke up with today because their privacy no longer met our requirements. And the vendor shared with them that they were just absolutely stunned that no district has ever done this to them before. And, you know, our take was, we're surprised that more districts aren't a little more prudent in the privacy regard. And we think it's, you know, I think Rob's hearing throughout other districts that everyone's becoming more aware of privacy, and there's kind of two camps. The camp that kind of really cares about it, and the camp that kind of is like us in our personal lives, where we just kind of accept that we're gonna click yes on the user agreement and not really read it. We have a, Rob has really helped ingrain in all of us that we have a responsibility to protect children's data and their privacy online, and we have to be very prudent with what we put their information into. So that's a big part of this.
So I don't wanna get ahead of your presentation, but where in your plan are you addressing cybersecurity and security in general for networks and data and-
Phishing.
Phishing and malware and all that stuff?
You wanna talk about Palo Alto and passwords?
Yeah. So, so in that 2023 is when we're gonna, like, we're in that, hopefully, that cycle of being able to replace our equipment with the latest and greatest. But we always stay up to date. Jack mentioned Palo Alto. We routinely upgrade that. And when we put it in, we put it in in a way to where we can upgrade one, and it doesn't impact what we're doing. We could do it in the middle of the day if we wanted to, though we don't. And then we just switch over to the other one while we're doing it. So we put a lot of things in place to where we have those upgrades happening all the time. It just, no one ever, no one ever sees it. So that's in place today.
And Palo Alto's a security side?
It's our, it's our, it's our main firewall, right? And we have two of them. And then, once the redundancy plan gets fully executed, actually, one of them will be moved to Orange. As I actually said, if Shanahan goes down, then we can switch everything over to Orange High School. With that, and part of that is what's called a zone integration server. And what that does is gives us the ability to block attacks from wherever in the world. So we constantly monitor what countries are trying to access. And for the most part, anything, you know, across the pond, around the world that isn't coming from the United States, we block. And then of those IP addresses that are trying to get in from within the United States, we try to see where they're coming from. And then we're constantly asking why. Why is, you know, why is California trying to access us? You know? And then if it doesn't make any sense, then we block them as well. So it's a constant.
And then as far as- Okay. I'll just add to something you may want to consider. So at my workplace, we're moving to, we prohibit employees from accessing their personal email accounts from their work devices because we have found the vast majority of phishing and attacks are coming through Gmail, Yahoo, personal accounts, not the national account. So we may want to consider thinking about different restrictions on devices so that you just make it as secure as possible.
Yeah. Especially as we add, high school students, you know, now have email provided from us, that is something that we could definitely, definitely do in the future to get them away from the personal side of things, and it's something we can manage.
We've been, we've been sending out our own phishing. I'm gonna talk for a third minute about the, your phishing emails.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so we send out our own to test. And then that way, we can kind of see who is-
Septal.
Yeah, septal is a good word.
A learning opportunity.
Yes, there you go.
Catch and educate.
Yes. And within that whole piece, if they are clicking on something, they should actually take them through a training right there on the spot to explain what phishing is, and hey, this was Owentangie, it wasn't the bad guys. But if it was, then you were just handing out your, the keys to your kingdom. And that's, and in general, we don't give anyone admin access here in the district for that reason. So they can't impact other things. It only impacts their little piece of the pie, so.
But so Emily and Rob have been working recently very hard on a password reset cycle, to implement that with employee passwords. So, I mean, we're definitely on the right track. We've seen kind of an increase in phishing opportunities. Is there anything else you wanted to say about that, Emily?
There has been increase in phishing. Even some alerts have been coming from auditor favors organization to alert us that, you know, folks are trying to get, or are targeting superintendents, board members, treasurer's, folks that are higher level access to try to get the folks to click on and get into things that they shouldn't be. So we're looking at a password reset that would create an automated number of days. People have to go in and do a password reset, do security questions. More of a 21st century protocol for what that would look like and how to implement that within the school district for staff. And then we'll take another step back and look at student side, what that might look like for the students if something like that could be implemented, and how we implement that with that many kids, or just high school level and so forth. So we're, we're taking pretty, pretty active steps in trying to make sure that we're staying up to industry standards on those things.
And since most of our systems are integrated together, it's kind of nice because you change it once and you just change the majority of all your access to everything. Or if we see suspicious activity, we can just change it and cut it off and then notify the staff member.
I actually want to give Rob's department some kudos. They, I don't know exactly how they find it, but they'll find student use that's inappropriate, and they'll contact the school and contact the teacher, and let them know that a student who may be on a device on their own time has done a workaround or found a hole in the gate somewhere, and will help the schools to identify either machines or kids who are trying to game the system. So we're being very prudent on trying to stop that behavior. Okay, so in addition to those three pieces of our plan, we felt it was important to share with you a discussion that we've been having. And it's just a discussion, but as we look at this growing need for technology, the increasing cost with technology, we've asked, how are other districts paying for it? How is this happening? And what you're probably well aware of is that many other districts implement a fee to offset technology costs. So we did a survey of area districts and universities where maybe we, some of our employees have students. I got the Ohio State one, Mark didn't know Ohio State's, but I found that online. But Krista knew her child's and Todd his. So you'll see that technology fees for students vary quite considerably. Ohio State is by program, so it's, you know, there are programs that cost nothing. It's kind of like a general studies. And then depending on the level of technicality within the program, up to $480 a year. These are all per year. Colorado's $134, you can see. Dublin's at $40 per student, Upper Arlington $100, Big Walnut $50 a student. I think it's interesting, Pickerington doesn't charge any, but charges an optional $40 accidental damage fee. Because all of these K-12 districts, those fees are providing students with a device as well. So it's paying for the infrastructure, but it's also paying for a device for a student. So in Pickerington, you know, you're taking the device home if you want to mitigate the risk. It's free, but, you know, you, we'll charge you this amount. So we thought you would be interested in knowing what the, what the trend is in the area and comparable districts. And then to make it a little more understandable, you know, if we were to propose a one-to-one program, that would scale up in '22, fiscal year '22, and take a couple of years to phase it in. So if you look at that, you know, it'd take $4.5 million a year to run that program with the security and the software and the infrastructure and the leasing model that we've talked about. At $50 a student, once you account for fee waivers for free and reduced-priced lunch, that would account for about $1 million. At $100 a student, $2 million, so it'd offset, you know, our budget by that much. So I think it was just interesting to provide that context for the board because it's something that we've been looking into and exploring and want to make sure that as we're presenting our five-year plan, that we're also presenting the things that we're talking about and looking at.
So what you're saying is we're underfunded in the technology department?
Yeah, write this down. Everywhere we're underfunded, absolutely.
No, I'm asking technology. We're underfunded in technology.
So we, we spend about $1 million every year out of the general fund on the software side of things. And we always try to buy our devices and hardware out of our permanent improvement fund or bond monies if there's a new school. So this year, it's about $1.9 million on those asset, physical asset costs. So, yes, if we wanted to be on scale with those other districts in terms of a one-to-one program, we would be underfunded.
Has that lack of funding put us behind in anything that we need to or should be doing for the students and/or in the security side? Are we, are we, I know, so, because you talk about phasing things in over time. I'm assuming that part of that is phasing it over time because of the cost, right?
For the cost and also the support side of things. You know, that, that kind of an initiative would take a lot of training and support for students and teachers. So the technology department, we would want to give them the opportunity to support teachers appropriately by using a phase in.
See, I guess we'll make sure we're all in the same place. If in fact, we felt we were underfunded in technology, then the user fee would be additive to the proposed technology budget. But it's not, right? Because if I read that slide, you're going from $4.1 to $4.8 million over the five-year period, and you're raising money with the fee, but you're really just trying to take pressure off the operating budget, not increase your spend on technology.
Correct, correct.
So it's not a level of funding issue, it's more a level of financing issue.
It would, it would increase the level of funding initially in this regard. So the assumption-
But still, you'd raise it from $4.1 to $4.5 if it was $50 a head. Took half of what you raised and it increased your budget.
Right. Right. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Currently, it's 2.9.
Yeah, currently, we're at 2.9. So to get, it would be an initial big jump and then that, the rest of that, yeah.
So right, so this, when would you start it then? Fee? How do you get from 2.9 to 4.1?
So right now, we don't have a one-to-one program, right? We only have 13,000 devices for 22,000 students. So what all those districts have done to implement the fee is pair it with a one-to-one program so that the students all have guaranteed access to a device at home during the day, wherever they are. What that adds to it-
Do you think one-to-one is the right ratio?
I think it can be. I, back to Roger's question, I don't think it's a necessity. I don't think that we're harming students at all. We have a BYOD program that we thought would be a little more robust than it is. So students aren't necessarily using that a ton to bring their own device. And with those 13,000 devices, we're getting a good level of access. You know, my access line was green on that.
My only experience is, my girls don't bring their own device because they have one provided for them, but they have one at home that they don't bring to school.
Right. So, like, from my experience, from a parent's side, right? I would not mind a fee because the device that I buy my kid, that I may have to buy him again in three years, it's gonna stay updated, it's gonna have the tech support from the school, the firewall support, the security, the damage protection, all of those things that, and they're gonna learn how to use it well through instruction at the school.
Can I, can I ask a question? What, what is Pickerington, Upper Arlington, Big Walnut, and Dublin doing in the classroom with their devices that we're not doing? I think that's the question. Are our students missing out on something?
I don't know.
I, I'd like to know the utilization.
It's called blended learning, right? When you're using, when you take the device, that's what they're calling, that's-
But if they have the device in their backpack and not using it in the classroom, what's the value of the device?
Yeah.
Other than something to carry around in their backpack?
Yeah, I mean, it was all-
I think that's what you're trying to get at.
That's what I'm getting at. I mean, it looks really pretty when you see a picture of the Big Walnut kids signing up and getting their device, you know, in the newspaper, but how are they using it?
Right.
So in a model like that, those devices would become our testing devices as well, that students would be using those devices for state testing. They would replace the devices that are currently in carts in classrooms. So they would come out of the backpack, so to speak. But I wouldn't say that Dublin or Upper Arlington are doing anything entirely different than we're able to do without a one-to-one program. I think they have more consistency in what they can do. That, you know, we have classrooms that utilize technology a lot because they're figuring out how to get the devices when they need them. We have other classrooms that are using it far less because it's hard to figure out when to get the devices when you need them. Or maybe you need them at the same time as the other teacher, and you've just conceded, you can be the tech teacher and I won't be the tech teacher. As we, as we adopt more curriculum that's device-based, I mean, we already have a lot. There have been instances of like homework issues where we want to assign homework on a device, but if a student doesn't have access or, most of our students, though, do have access. We did a survey two years ago- We did a survey two years ago and there's, there is a lot of access in our homes. So I don't think that we're totally missing the boat in that regard.
Yeah, multiple.
I guess it just begs the question, what's the tech, what problem is the technology fee solving?
Well, yeah, it, it solves the access fee, so, or the access problem.
But I thought you said sufficient access.
We do right now, but again, you have to go back to that PTO. When those devices fall off, we're not going to be able to, we're not going to be able to...
That's why we need to understand the mix of, what's the magnitude of that PTO purchase?
Yeah, the, the interesting fact on a, on a Chromebook is, once, once they become into life, they, they literally, it, it's different than a regular computer, like the ones you have, they, they literally can become worthless because they never get updated. Google will stop pushing updates and then the things that we want to try to do, we can't do, that's kind of the reason.
Because you have to buy the next level of Chromebook?
Yeah, you have to buy a, a model that is, yeah, I mean, I'm sure you guys have iPhones and eventually they will not, you know, not update because of their age. It's a, it's a similar idea, just, just a little sooner.
I imagine it's probably similar in my profession where we use AutoCAD for document development, where I might have a Revit 14, but it can't be updated. I have to get the Revit 18. So I would imagine there's a similarity there. You have to get the advanced system. You can't update a previous system.
Same concept.
Especially if it's old.
As far as what's the magnitude, once all those other ones fall out, I would say it's about a million dollars for, is what we would be able to, given, you know, a slight increase in budget, to maintain about half of what we have now. So a million dollars would maintain 7,000 devices across the district. So that level of access would drop by 7,000, 6,000 devices, or we have to pay more than a million dollars to... So it solves that access problem down the road when the devices fall off. And it also helps with the stability in terms of the budget because you can put them all on the lease cycle.
Do we anticipate the PTOs no longer donating Chromebooks?
I can't say for sure what they will do. My sense has been, which is mostly guided really by OEF, that Chromebooks have lost their luster. OEF and I think PTOs are the same way, like to buy the next new thing for teachers to keep us out in front. And Chromebooks are kind of being treated now the way smart boards ended up being treated, where our PTOs bought a lot of smart boards. And now Rob's in the business of spending a lot of his device money to replace smart boards where they're being well-used, but they're just not functional anymore.
I don't think it makes sense from a strategy standpoint to depend on PTOs to fund technology purchases and upgrades. That's part of the point of all this with cost and with, to Kevin's point, and Kevin's right, is we need, and Julie both, we need a little bit more detail into this to understand what this looks like over a time period, to understand, one, do we have to up or increase or improve or change how we fund, right, from our, from our monies? And two, are there partnering opportunities to offset, including this? And how does that look in the overall delivery model to get where we need to be? I think, I think, you know, my opinion is, is that we've gone about this based, framing it around a budget line and an amount as opposed to looking at an overall strategy for delivery and then seeing what that money fits. I think we've done it backwards. What can we fit into 1.9 million as opposed to what do we, can we do by understanding the full picture of the finance? That's what, that's my point.
And just so, I think I understood what you said, but this would be that full picture of the finance? The way we're, this is a hypothetical, right?
You're going to have to dumb it down for me then, because I think there's some pieces of it there that, so, I mean, I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it more in terms of, because you're talking about rolling off Chromebooks and the cost, we're talking about an imaginary funding program, PTOs and OEFs and things like that, there are looking at shiny smart boards. You're right, they dump Chromebooks because we've got these interactive boards. Ooh, pretty, let's go. But what's next? I mean, are we going to go to what? Virtual reality goggles? Is that the next thing? I mean, I appreciate what all the PTOs do, but I don't think that's the, I don't think we want to be in the business of planning our, our financial strategy based on what if, so.
And we don't, but just keep in mind, the PTOs will typically seek the input of the building principal to understand what their needs are and they try to meet the needs of the principal.
That's right.
And so the principals drive a lot of direction to what the PTOs are spending their money on. Because the PTOs want to help the school, right?
Exactly. That's a very good point, because we actually, the PTOs asked what our plan was. We gave them, three years ago, a three-year Chromebook plan and they funded it basically for us in one year.
But, I mean, you can't rely on that funding. If they have a bad fundraising year, then you're out.
But I think it's also faulty to say it just disappears.
Oh, right.
They need to run some sensitivities. What happens if it comes in 50%? They really get a good sense of it.
Agreed. They need some, yeah, they need direction. So, I mean, that, if they're asking you, that's great.
Yeah, but they're also because, yeah, yes.
But, you know, it's probably a deeper dive on this technology budget to see how much is bandwidth, how much is devices, how much is software, to really understand, because the budget would tell you, whether you state it or not, what your priorities are. If you're spending more on devices than bandwidth, how do you solve your bandwidth control, right?
I, I have a couple of questions and, and one of them, a Chromebook, I thought they cost around $300, is that correct? I don't own one, so. How much, what does it cost to, if we were looking at a leasing program, what is the lease of a Chromebook cost?
You can take that number and divide it by, divide it by four, or however many years we, we decide to, to lease it for. So there's, there's a device cost and then there's a, there's a Google license that gives us the ability to bring it into, to the management and make changes to it, all of them, all at once if we wanted to. You know, like with testing, we don't go to each one of them and place that little testing icon on it. We, we send it to, to every device. So there's the, the two pieces of that.
Okay. Do any other districts in your survey, do they charge just a technology fee, not for a device, but just like as part of their school fees? I mean, I know we, like, we charge for Naviance, which is access to a program, but do, do districts charge, like, access for students? Is that a...
All of the college fees have no device associated with them.
Right.
All of those districts do have a device. I don't know, do you know of a district that charges it?
I want to say Big Walnut, but I don't.
But they have a device, at the high, at least at the high school level, they're getting a device.
What about the Carr Center? Is there any type of technology fee in their fees?
There is. I have an nephew that goes to...
But it's not, they don't give devices, right? It's just maybe programs associated with their...
Well, yeah, because there's different programs with the digital design and the app development and, but those are like based on the curriculum that you're taking.
Right. They're different for each one.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah, Chromebook can be used for everything. So the, the program fee may be different.
And if you have, like, I remember, I think it's very cool, that Gizmo program that they do their science experiments in. I think it's neat. Of course, my son didn't enjoy it, but I, I did. And, but he has a Chromebook, a district Chromebook, and we would do them on his Chromebook, but I assume I can just go on and log on to my, like, OLSD and get to it through my home computer as well, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And then I have a final question. How did it go giving all of the sophomores the ACT on the computers this year?
Well, very well.
Or the juniors, I guess, what's the juniors?
Juniors. Other than, other than the snow day.
Luckily we planned for that, so worked out.
So, so assuming, do you have any more slides?
Uh, I don't think so, no. Nope. And what I passed out to you is just an overview of, you know, the, the five-year technology plan is quite large with a lot of numbers and Excel spreadsheets that Rob has provided. This is a summary that I created kind of for myself and the leadership team, kind of highlight the major costs that are associated with it. On the third page, I explain kind of how the breakdown happens with, with the hypothetical fee. So I don't think it'll answer all your questions at all, but it might get you in that direction of where costs would be.
Well, and I, I mean, I've said many times, you know, I think we're beyond the days of cutting to the bone on things. I don't want us to cut to the bone on things, but I want us to be, still remain fiscally responsible, but with inside of our, the strategic plan and the business case for making sure that, that we can continue to remain in the position that, why people come here and why their kids are educated here. So don't, I don't, I don't really want to talk deep cuts until we have to someday, if that ever happens again, you know? Hope that it never does.
Well, I think suffice to say, more, more dialogue is needed on this issue when we're not obviously voting tonight. And I probably would want to dig into more of the detail, not just the summary. Because my concern is, it's another fee, we're becoming the airline industry and we can't do anything without a fee. And so I want to be sensitive and aware and sensitive to that.
That's fair.
Well, as I, as I kind of tried to point out in the memo for the meeting, you know, it's, it's not going away and the cost of it's not going down. And I do think we have to come to that place of what, how we're going to provide those funding sources, whether we build it into that next levy cycle or levy ask or permanent improvement, part of our continued improvement, permanent improvement monies or, or those kind of things. So, and we wanted to present that fee as a, as a possibility. The fee hits, fortunately or unfortunately, people who don't have kids in school see it as fair as a user fee. And then people who have kids in school see it as an additional cost and they're the people who primarily support us. So it, it's not, I'm very sensitive to it too.
Okay. Thanks for the discussion.
Thank you, guys.
Good discussion.
Kevin, before we go on, I just have an announcement.
Oh, go right ahead.
Liberty is up at the half, 23 to 19.
Against...
Pickerington Central.
Pick Central.
Wow, against Pick Central.
Yeah, they're in the regionals.
Big game.
20.
Yes. They're the last two names. Yep.
Next item is treasurer action items. Hope Liberty hangs on, does well.
Ms. Hatfield?
Yes, please. I would like to present treasurer action items A through C for approval, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Rafe, please present superintendent action items.
Yes. Before I do, I just want to present or highlight that there is an administrative stipend for Zach Peterson, who is a assistant principal at Liberty High School, who is, is going to step in for the lacrosse coach at Orange High School and help with those duties here this spring to help supervise the team and support the students. As we know, the Orange lacrosse coach passed away prior to the start of the season, so we appreciate Zach stepping up and, and doing that. So with that, I'll present superintendent action items A through D for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? And I appreciate you calling that out, Ms. Rafe.
Yeah.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Feesel?
Yes.
Ms. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Only item is our next meeting is April 11.